Yeah, sorry. I think we're ready to begin the introductory video. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to announce that the Facebook streaming service is not working at the moment, but we are recording this meeting and it will be published later. So apologies for that technical issue. I also want to announce that parking validation and bus passes are now available for commission workshops and meetings. Anyone parking for this meeting or using public transit can pick up passes from security on their way out. That will be validated for today only. I would like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that the commission votes on at our meeting this evening. Commissioners, we are now at the consent agenda. Are there any questions from any commissioners about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay. We need to add this amendment to the agenda about the NCACC voting member? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and the remainder of the agenda as published with the addition that we need to vote on a commission member to attend and vote on the NCACC District 16 Caucus meeting on July 22nd?
All move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we are now at public comment. So we have a list of folks that have signed up who indicated they wish to speak during public comment. I'm gonna go through the list and ask each person who signed up to come up to the podium and speak. You have three minutes to speak. There's an orange light that goes off when you have about 30 seconds left, and then a red light and a sound will go off when your time is up. And we do ask you to discontinue your public comments when your time is up because we want to give everyone the same amount of time during public comment. I understand there is one group that's an individual that wants to speak on behalf of other folks who will give up their time and they'll have 10 minutes to speak. And once we get through the list, if there's anyone else who wants to speak during public comment who didn't sign up earlier, there'll be a chance to speak at that time. All right, so the first person on the list is Tracy Hawkins. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Okay, great. And Tracy, I think you requested 10 minutes and you have eight other folks with you who are giving up their time.
Yes.
Is that correct? Could I ask the folks who are giving up their time to please raise your hand? Okay, great.
Okay, is this working?
Yes, it is.
I'm not used to talking in a microphone. Good evening, everyone. We are here this evening to oppose the decision to close French Broad Outfitters at Harmony Creek. Our change.org petition to save FBO at Harmony Creek has garnered nearly 1,900 signatures since it began circulating on July 1st. We have a lot of supporters here today. I'd like them to raise their hands. And we have overflow in the other room. FBO at Harmony Creek is a cherished community hub at the confluence of Harmony Creek and the French Broad River. Locals and tourists gather there for outdoor recreation and family-friendly fun. FBO has a clean beach, beverage center, food truck, live music, disc golf, and a welcoming space for dogs and children to play. For cyclists, it's a destination on the Greenway. Last year, FBO at Harmony Creek launched 12,000 locals and tourists down the river, providing income for Buncombe County and the city of Asheville, while also paying for the upkeep, improvements, and security of this one acre property which lies in a floodway. They employ about 32 people during their six-month summer operations and pay rent to Buncombe County for 12 months each year, although they are only allowed to operate for six. FBO has been investing in and maintaining Harmony Creek since 2016. Before then, Danny Rice owned a sand dredging business that operated there. He described the area at that time as sketchy, a meeting ground for drug users and other lewd and illicit activity. After the sand dredging business closed and FBO became the occupant of this one acre plot, they revitalized the property to ensure it is safe, open to the public, and accessible to all. The public responded by organically creating a favorite community destination placed in nature that brings respite and joy to a diverse mix of people, families, and dogs. So what's the problem? In January, Buncombe County advised FBO that they are not permitted to renew their license, permanently closing FBO at Harmony Creek at the end of the 2024 season. A conservation easement granted to Riverlink in 2006 for 12 acres and encompassing the one acre under FBO's management had gone unnoticed and unadministered for nearly 18 years. Suddenly rediscovered by Riverlink in 2021, they notified the county of its violation and obligation to ensure the 12-acre property remains as a recreational scenic and open space area and commercial activities are prohibited. However, FBO at Harmony Creek is already providing a recreational scenic and open space and operates in compliance with the conservation easement with one exception: the presence of commercial activity. If FBO is forced to close, the burden of upkeep will transfer to the taxpayers, the same taxpayers who are being deprived of their beloved community and recreational spot. It is naive to think no commercial activity will occur there after FBO is shuttered. Unreported cash transactions occur every day outside the gates of FBO for the exact services they provide, record, and report. How will this activity be stymied, especially if you are closing a small business due to commercial activity? Furthermore, will Buncombe County ensure the new expanded use of Harmony Park is secured from the previously mentioned sketchy behavior that will certainly find its way there? Already, houseless people living in their vehicles line the road leading up to the park. It is FBO's very presence and stewardship of this one acre haven that keeps the park safer for all of us. We say no to closing FBO. FBO at Harmony Creek is a rare asset to our community. It's a perfect companion to the Harmony Creek Greenway and cannot be replicated under the conservation easement. We emailed each commissioner voicing our concerns. Today, we are publicly requesting meetings to hear the voices of the taxpaying citizens of Buncombe County who clearly want FBO at Harmony Creek to remain as it is. We want a solution that preserves this invaluable community asset that brings joy, recreation, and conservation stewardship to Asheville and Buncombe County. Save FBO at Harmony Creek and come out to experience the magic for yourselves. Okay, I can turn over my time or questions? I don't know how it goes from here.
Well, thank you for coming out and speaking on this item. So we don't typically get in kind of an active conversation about public issues during the public comment. This is sort of a chance for citizens to talk to the commission and so we're here to listen. But thank you for taking time to come speak. I will just make one comment, so just for additional folks that will speak. We do ask that folks not, you know, give praise or condemnation to or feedback to the people who speak. We don't want people to applaud or boo or anything like that. So we just want each person to be able to say what they're here to say without kind of real-time feedback from the other folks in the commission chambers. But thank you for coming out. The next person on the list is Dylan Simpson.
Good afternoon, guys. Just gonna keep it brief. I'm an employee with French Broad Outfitters. I spend probably the most time there than a lot of people. I spend most of my afternoons interacting with local tourists and locals alike. I also spend a majority of my day picking up trash all over the property, including outside of our grounds along Harmony Creek Road. If you ever have been there and been inside of the property, it's a lovely place to be. I'm really intentional about keeping trash out of there. And people, guests that come there, they also pick up trash. I receive trash bags every single day coming from the end of the road. And as soon as you leave our gates, there's the public transfer station. There's trash along the entire road. And as soon as you come into our gates or around the Harmony Creek Park, a lot of that trash is picked up by people in the community or myself. It'd be a shame to have that problem continue without us being there to help the community out. I was outside of the gates today and came across some people with tents set up outside of the gates. And on the sign, it said, anybody that comes near here will be shot with a crossbow. So I took that, took it to the trash, and notified authorities of that person's presence there. But things like that are a common occurrence outside of our gates. And we do have intention to push people out of there, but that's public property. So within our gates, we try and keep our guests safe and happy. I don't have much more to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dylan. Okay, next is Roberta Sinal.
Hi, my name is Roberta Sinal, and I've lived in Asheville for five years. And FBO is my favorite place for outdoor fun and socializing. I am devastated just by thinking it may no longer be available. I'd like to point out that Asheville's population has been steadily growing, showing an increase of nearly 14% between 2010 and 2020, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. More than ever, public recreational spaces are vital to balancing urban growth and the well-being of the inhabitants. FBO at Harmony Creek, with its access to water sports and diverse recreational activities, plays a pivotal role in fostering health and community spirit in Asheville. Here's what some other people had to say in the comment petition section, and I encourage you to go online and read them for yourself. They're very moving. Benjamin White says, "FBO at Harmony Creek is a special and essential part of our culture in Asheville, a source of community and music and joy." Glenn Miska says, "There can't possibly be a better use for this space. FBO on Harmony is a community treasure." Kristin Gahl says, "This is my favorite spot in the summer. I am handicapped, and I can park close and sit by the water and watch my dog play." Whoops, sorry. Someone else says, "I frequent this spot. Members of the Western North Carolina Disc Golf Association have curated the best night of the week for us to gather and compete together. It would be heartbreaking to lose this venue." Tesla Jameson, "So many great spots are disappearing. Asheville is losing as much of what draws so many people here. I sure wish and hope for a solution that allows FBO to continue." Just a couple more. Jacqueline Hammond says, "I used to work here, and my husband's funeral and celebration of life was here. The place is sacred and needs to be preserved as a place for locals by locals." And finally, "FBO is the last great place in Asheville. Changing it would be a travesty." Thank you.
All right. Nick Rutherford.
Thank you for your time. I'm Nick Rutherford. Adding to the chorus of these fine people, but from a slightly different angle. I've been Nashville since 2020, and I'm an avid cyclist. I live kind of near Carrier Park. And the reason I chose that area was because the Greenway had just gotten built, and I thought it was a great way to go, you know, travel through the city. I actually discovered French Broad Outfitters doing a group bike ride on the Greenway and just kind of happened to cross it. One of my concerns, though, is when you add in the I-26 Connector Project that is forcing other places to close, such as Salvage Station and more. It's starting to get to the point where if FBO closes, a lot of those destinations that you would want to cycle on the Greenway or be by the river just simply won't be there anymore. I think because of the way that FBO is set up with that little bit of like a gate in the area, it's better than any public dog park in town for a place to bring your dog and hang out, especially in the heat like this. You know, there's access to shade, there's access to water. If you go to the dog park in, you know, West Asheville, it's like Africa. So yeah, I mean, I know if FBO closes, that the park would probably still be open. But I know I've already see a lot of other commercial activity, like unlicensed rafting, you know, companies operating. I doubt most of those people are paying taxes on it, whereas French Broad Outfitters is paying tax on the land as well as paying a considerable amount of money to upkeep it, especially after floods occur. So if we lose it, you know, we're gonna lose, you know, the amendees we already have now, and it'll be worse than it is now, but it'll come at, you know, a much higher cost to all of us people, which kind of seems like a losing situation to me. Like they said, we started a petition a couple weeks ago, and it's all been really word of mouth. There's about 2,000 signatures, which is, you know, a little over 2% of what the population of Asheville would be. I haven't met a single person that has a bad thing to say about it. And we're expecting thousands and more signatures over the next several weeks as well, you know, as we continue to get the word out. I truly believe that the community really wants to keep this place. And that's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Stephanie Phyllis.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your service to the community. Stephanie Phillips, also known as Schlapo. Family goes back at least four generations in Western Carolina. We've all heard revitalization. Here's revitalize nation and revitalize planet. There's been a massive development of agriculture farmland over the past half-century without much thought about where our food actually comes from anymore. If it continues, one day will be developed all the way from Bristol, Tennessee to the South Carolina state line. Our 4-H clubs and farm families could tell us how many people 20 acres could feed. Calculate the county population. If Madison and Buncombe County call a moratorium on building development, Madison County could help support the needs to feed Buncombe County. Consider reinventing the community into a preservation of agriculture forestry, a wounded warrior hub, and an integrated tourist destination in college town. Revitalize some buildings for housing our wounded warriors and classroom space. Invite colleges from in and out of the state to teach inspiring curriculum. Bearner-Bilt University could teach the rich factual history of the mansion. Retired volunteer teachers could help our veterans pursue their GI bills. As they heal, they could become campus security supporting local law enforcement. If you post all applications for development immediately on a website and a television channel, more support would come from the community members in the decision-making vote. There's a model for this already, a college town partially developed in the state of Maryland. However, it still is only doing online learning. North Carolina has some of the best colleges and universities in the country with academic and athletic excellence, well-known in the research triangle. To date, no town invites all colleges to come and participate complimentary rather than competitively. In a national emergency, we'll all find out almost every ingredient, including the box of a Domino's Pizza, is trucked in from the midsection of the country. If we grow and feed locally and manage our forestry for heat and modest building, renovated existing buildings will be better prepared and can teach this concept. Maryland and West Virginia are working on the same. Together, we could secure a large portion of the southeast of our country and better support the rest of our country in an emergency, especially our nation's capital and our elders in the state of Florida. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. Deborah Hag.
Good evening. I'm simply here to request some assistance in getting help from the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission. We have a very angry bear up in our area, and we've lived here for eight years. We're all very well aware of living with the bears and using bear bells and everything. But I have been personally chased and frightened by this particular bear, enough so that I don't feel comfortable going out in my backyard any longer. We've contacted the North Carolina Wildlife Resources several times. Their answer has been, you are allowed to shoot the bear if you feel you are threatened. We don't own a gun, and we don't intend to get a gun, nor do we want our neighbors shooting guns. But it has become very frightening in our neighborhood. No one walks there any longer. We know where the den is. We're just asking for some assistance in possibly destroying the den, which we heard then they do leave. But it has, I'm just saying, I don't feel comfortable in my home. And I feel like, you know, we pay taxes, we should be protected, or at least they should come out and address the issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. James Hag.
Same concerns as my wife. There's two neighborhoods adjacent to us that in the last five years has had an increase in development that's really been impacting pushing these bears into our neighborhood. Now, we're all familiar with the bears and love watching them, but they've become increasingly aggressive, especially this female bear. And when I called up the Wildlife Commission Supervisor Ashley Hobbs, she said that she calls, or they call, our three neighborhoods the bear highway. And so I'm asking, you know, not only if you could look into the lack of response from the wildlife, but also the impact of overdeveloping these areas and how it affects other communities. In my particular case, I was out there just blowing leaves on my carport, and from around the corner came the mother bear and charged me and was within three feet, and I had a high-powered blower in its face. And I'm backing up, and it continued until I finally went like this, and she backed off. Even more alarming, two days later, I was bringing the trash down, brought it out to the street, and saw the mother bear and the three cubs, two neighbors down, knocking over a metal garbage can. And so I yelled to them, they get out of there. They backed up into my yard. And then I ran up the driveway because I was told by the wildlife that I should haze them and either throw rocks or fireworks or bear spray. So while I'm waiting, you know, for them to walk down the street, the mother circled all the way around my house and came in within five feet of running through the bushes at me in aggressive manner. And now it's three feet away from me. And I had a rock, so I took and I hit it with a rock, and it kind of backed up a little bit, and then I threw another one. It went into the woods and then right down to my garbage. I had purchased a $450 bear-proof can after having an HOA meeting with the bear wives, and it was able to get the garbage out of that and then eat it right next to my driveway. Now, each time that I call the wildlife, I'm told, it's okay to kill a bear. We'll come out and investigate and remove it. The next time when I talked to Ashley Hobbs, she said that we could go ahead and put an electric fence around our yard. And then her supervisor, James Tomlin, I had asked him, you know, can you at least get rid of her den? And what would you do if it was charging? And he said, if it was charging that close, I would shoot the bear, but I'm still not gonna come out. And so, you know, what are we as neighbors? We have fireworks going on all the time, dogs barking. It's getting to be very alarming.
Mr. and Ms. Hag, if you could give your phone number to our clerk, Stacy? If you already have it, we'll see if someone from the county can follow up and see if we have any resources from the county level. Right? Okay. Okay, the next person that signed up is, sorry if I mispronounced your last name. I think it's Fred Friedman? Yeah.
Thank you. I'm here to speak about aggressive bears in our neighborhood. I have lived up on Town Mountain since 1990, and the situation has really gotten out of hand, partly because of people feeding bears, and I would like to address that separately. But we had an incident last year. I was not home, my partner was there. Came home from a walk, saw the screen laying on our front porch. The window was pulled open, it's a casement window. And he turned around, and apparently the bear had just come out of the house. He ran chasing it, and the bear ran off. It came back again and again. He called me, I was in Arden, and I said, I'm calling the wildlife people right now. I called Ryan, who had been at my property several times. I've had all these people up to my neighborhood many times over the years. It's the aggression now of the bears that is very difficult to deal with. Anyway, Ryan said I could be at your home in about a half hour, which was amazing which was amazing because I know there's not many people out there in the wildlife that is able to respond. So when he said that, I said, I will be there in a half hour. I was out in Arden. I got there, he arrived basically at the same time I did. And he said, prior to that, he said, don't touch the screen. Let me see if I can get a DNA sample off of it. If we can find that bear, you know, match it, whatever, because it obviously has been in your property. Anyway, while he was there, I turn around. My partner is standing in the living room. It's a straight shot from the front door to the back door. And I say, the bear is at the back door, which was screens. He closed the wooden doors and the bear started pushing on the doors. He's holding the door. I'm yelling to Ryan, Ryan, the bear is at the back door. Well, he went to his vehicle, got a gun, walked around the house, put, got off a shot. The bear actually turned away when he saw him with the gun. Disappeared around the house. Ryan disappeared too, and then another shot and the bear was taken care of. But I do not own a gun. Fortunately, he was there to witness it. But the response we get when people do not see it is the problem. You know, they want us to handle it. Anyway, I'd like to see signs on Town Mountain Road about your ordinance saying, do not feed the bears and a fine. That would be great. I don't know if you have any signage anywhere that's been put up referencing feeding bears and the ordinance and fines. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Morris.
Good evening. I'm Andrea Morris. I am a 20-year, 20-plus-year Asheville resident. I'm also a duly licensed, board-certified mental health and addictions professional. I also am the owner and operator of Soul Flow Yoga. We are a limited liability company, a small woman-owned business here in Asheville for the past eight years. And without the resources, space from French Broad Outfitters, unfortunately, this business dies. Our participants are an equal mix of tourists and locals. We are very hopeful to continue offering this life-giving practice here in our own backyard. Thank you for your considerations.
Todd Lester.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Todd Lester. I'm a 17-year resident of Asheville. And I'm a volunteer with Braver Angels. We are a cross-partisan nonprofit that is working to bridge our nation's political division. Polls show, and you won't be surprised, that Americans feel more divided than ever and increasingly view members of the opposite political party as not just wrong, but bad people. At the same time, Americans are increasingly divided into bubbles and echo chambers with limited exposure to the other side, consuming news that confirms their opinions and stereotypes. This polarization has touched many of our governing institutions, including how we conduct our elections. Restoring trust in our electoral system has been a top focus of Braver Angels. Conservatives and liberals distrust it for vastly different reasons, from voter fraud and election security to voter suppression and peaceful transfer of power. Leading up to the 2024 elections, Braver Angels worked to rebuild this trust by seeking solutions supported by people across the political spectrum. The resulting Trustworthy Elections Report was distilled into values and concerns in 23 concrete solutions. Braver Angels has achieved this by dialing down the heated rhetoric that gets in the way of real conversations and accurate understanding of our differences. On Thursday, July 25th, from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. at Skyland United Methodist Church in South Asheville, the Braver Angels of Western North Carolina are hosting a town hall titled, Restoring Trust in Our Elections: What Conservatives and Liberals Agree On. It is free and it is open to the public. I'd like to invite you and any of your friends on the other side to attend and explore what this bipartisan report could mean for restoring trust in our electoral system, as well as defining solutions to other local and state issues that have been compromised by the levels of our polarization. For more information and to register, you can go to braverangels.org/events or you could search through your inbox. I sent you all an email at tlester@braverangels.org. So thank you very much for your consideration and especially for your civic service. Thanks.
Thank you. Corey James. Last name, I may have Corey wrong, last name James. Anyone else wants to talk about the French Broad Outfitters? Okay, sure. Come on up. Yep.
Hello. My name's Jerry Sams. I'm a lifelong native. Was born in St. Joseph's Hospital here many, many years ago. And Sams Gap is named after my ancestors that came through. I just want to say, I didn't know too much about FBO Hominy Creek until about maybe four, five years ago. And then I discovered what a paradise, what a really nice place to go and listen to music. The beauty of the area is just superb. And I realize there's some constraints with having, you know, not being a commercial activity. But this commercial activity is really a treasure for visitors as well as people that are natives here. I'm so glad I found it. I hope we don't lose it. I made a picture before, it wasn't even Hurricane Fred. It was only a tropical storm, Fred, messed up our area. But I've got a photograph I'd like to introduce as evidence that I took right after we had a big rainstorm with a rainbow going over across French Broad. I hope that, I hope that you can find it in yourselves to see what the true value of this area is. And it would be nice if you could go there and see for yourself and see that these people are not, if it is a commercial activity, it's not a detrimental commercial activity. It's a, it should be on the Welcome Center, a video of Hominy Creek. FBO Hominy Creek should be, you know, a point of interest for people coming into Asheville. But anyway, if I can submit this to you guys.
Share with our county clerk.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate hearing from you. All right, I think that's everyone that's signed up. Are there any other members of the public you would like to speak during public comment? Sure, come on up.
Thank you very much and good evening. My name is Peter Thorworth. I live in West Asheville. I'd like to talk about three things and ask you to look into them. The first one is there's a tremendous number of tree branches that are blocking signs. So there are exits, there are stop signs, there are a wide variety of signs where those tree branches are already blocking them and they're only going to get bigger. It creates somewhat of a dangerous situation. I don't know if that is county business or Department of Transportation. I think it probably crosses over into both. The second thing is I live near the intersection of New Lester Highway and Mount Vernon. And that's where there's a Sonic and a Walgreens and a Ingalls store. From there, going one mile in either direction, it's kind of turned into a, I won't call it a racetrack, but a place where many, many people realize that especially if they're driving north towards Lester, they can step on the gas there and whether it's cars, motorcycles, or trucks, I hear them and see them constantly doing what should be described as reckless driving. So it'd be nice to see some police presence there so people realize that they're not allowed to go as fast as they can just because there's a long straightaway before the next light. The third thing is in the county's publications, public announcements, things that they use to send out to the public, I would encourage you to just encourage the public to put a street number on every home and every business, whether it's an ambulance or something else that's trying to find that place. It's a small effort to make and it really could make a big difference for someone that's trying to find a destination. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right, well, I want to express our appreciation to everyone who came out to speak during public comment. All right. We have a presentation, including a proclamation recognizing July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month. And I believe Commissioner Terry Wells is going to present the proclamation. And Thomas Gull is here to receive along with friends. So thanks, thank you all for being here.
County of Buncombe proclamation, Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this county, throughout this country, including Buncombe County. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who utilize parks. And whereas through events like the Lake Julian Park Campout and the kids' fishing events, Parks and Recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health and well-being. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities, providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, greenways, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs and events are critical to social interaction and enhance self-esteem. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas Buncombe County offers river parks, sports complexes, natural areas for families and neighbors to gather, celebrate, and recreate. And whereas residents and visitors celebrate with Buncombe County Parks and Recreation services each July and December with fireworks and Festival of Lights. And whereas Buncombe County proudly partners with the Special Olympics and celebrates our award-winning teams that competed recently at the state level. And whereas Buncombe County recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved by Buncombe County Board of Commissioners that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in Buncombe County. Signed, Brownie Newman, Chairman of Buncombe County Board of Commissioners.
So on behalf of our staff and our fearless leader and director, Allison Gaines, who is unable to be with us tonight, I want to say thank you for your continued support for the many parks and recreation programs that we continue to elevate throughout the county. So thank you. And I'm going to turn things over to Carol Peterson. She's our Chair of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thanks to Buncombe County government for your support of Parks and Recreation in Buncombe County. We really appreciate it. Speaking on behalf of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, I would like to congratulate and recognize our entire Parks and Recreation staff who under the leadership of Director Allison Gaines accomplished so much for our citizens. I call them the little engine that could. Parks and Recreation are 13 full-time and eight part-time staff strong and operate along with the libraries under the cultural and recreation piece of the county budget, about 2% of the budget. Let me hasten to say, this funding is supplemented by grants, partnerships, collaboration among county departments, local, state, and federal agencies. Every day, these, I started to say, these young people, they are young. These young people get up and look for what grants they can apply for so we can have great recreation services in Buncombe County. Let's together think about the scope of this department's work. Buncombe County, north to south, east to west. Charles D. Owen Park in Black Mountain, a hidden gem. Understand your county staff met there for your picnic a year, several months ago. Absolutely beautiful. Beautiful lake, kids' fishing tournament, softball and baseball fields, picnic shelters, fitness trails, and more. Buncombe County Sports Park, we're going to the west now. The Dog Park, we're very proud of that Dog Park. Picnic areas, disc golf, walking trails, volleyball courts, community garden, soccer fields, playgrounds, and more. Lake Julian Park, we're going right center now. Fireworks, Festival of Lights, kids' fishing tournaments, family campouts, and more. We have seven river parks, five pools. When I go by Kane Creek Middle School, Kane Creek Pool every day, they're standing straight up in that pool. There's not even room for them to lay down and swim. It is so very popular. Irwin Pool, Hominy Valley, North Buncombe, Owen. And let's talk about community centers just a minute. Terry Wells, Commissioner Wells read the proclamation and did a good job. I don't know who wrote it, but it was very well done. Sandy Marsh is having a reunion at their community center this Saturday. Understand they have about 150 people registered now, maybe more. Sandy Marsh Community Center does so much for that area. Commissioner Wells is a big part of that. Big Ivy, been to Big Ivy lately? You know, they've opened the pool again. That's in thanks to Buncombe County Maintenance, went out there and redid that pool and it is good to go. Our sheriff was here earlier and I understand he was, I saw that he was at the opening. If he got in the pool, some of the others might have to get out. He made a big splash. Lester Community Center. Okay, we've talked about Special Olympics. 2,000 participants either as Olympians or people who encouraged them this year at TC Robertson High School. We have what's called a core program, community outreach and recreation experiences. This young man right here, Max Stanley, goes in a van out to the outreaches in the county with recreation services experiences. We have greenways, blueways, and trails. Taylor's Wave, which I know is a Woodfin enterprise, but in connection with Buncombe County. So we appreciate that. We appreciate former city councilman Mark Hunt and the great service he gave to that. We appreciate Jerry Vehan, the former mayor of Woodfin and who was our esteemed emergency management person here, being part of that program. Think about the economic development impact of our well-run and extensive array of recreation activities in Buncombe County. We've just completed a research for a system-wide Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we had meetings all across the county. So I started to say sold-out meetings. You had to buy, you didn't have to buy a ticket fee there. But capacity crowds and really got a lot of input from the community and we appreciate that. Once again, Buncombe County Parks and Recreation, the little engine that does excellent work for all of us blessed to live in this bountiful Buncombe County. Thank you so much. One more thing, please, before I sit down. I want to say a special thank you to Chairman Newman for his great service with Buncombe County, for the leadership that you've provided for this commission. And I wish you and Beth and your daughters much good health and much happiness as you retire. It's been a pleasure to be here. Thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Thank you to all for all that you do and for being here tonight. Appreciate you. Appreciate you. All right. We do have one public hearing this evening. Public hearing to consider the rezoning of Yates Avenue from R1 Residential and C.R. Conference Resort to R1 Residential. All right. And I think Haley Mathis is here to get us started. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. My name is Haley Mathis, and this is the review of ZPH 2024-00015 Yates Avenue Math Amendment. This hearing was properly noticed and all applicable parties notified of the meeting in accordance with general statutes and county code. That includes a legal ad in the Citizen Times newspaper, notices mailed to the property owners within 1,000 feet of subject property, a notice on the county's website, and physical postings on the site. The applicant and owner is Said Hassan Sadegian Motahar. The rezoning is for one unaddressed parcel on Yates Avenue. The parcel is 1.78 acres. The current use is vacant land, and it is served by Septic and Well. The application is to rezone from R1 Residential and C.R. Conference Resort to just R1 Residential. You can see the current zoning map on the left side and the proposed rezoning on the right. This parcel is located in an area identified by the Comprehensive Plan Growth Equity and Conservation map as rural community conservation area. And it's located on this, at the star on the map. This chart compares the dimensional standards of the zoning districts. If the rezoning request is approved, the required setbacks off of the property lines would stay the same unless the property were to obtain sewer access. In that case, the setbacks would decrease and the height would decrease as well. The types of uses allowed on the property would decrease since this is considered a downzoning. However, R1 would allow for HUD labeled manufactured homes with special requirements. Oops, sorry. Oh, no, I'm back, sorry. The types of uses allowed on the property would decrease, yeah, okay. Some examples of other uses that would be allowed after rezoning include single-family homes, duplexes, community-oriented development, residential planned unit developments, and more. The surrounding developments include single-family residential, manufactured home sites, residential building lots, and camp resort. The rezoning request has been found to be consistent with a number of county plan recommendations, such as the future land use map, utility and transportation availability, overlay protection areas, high and moderate hazard stability areas, and compatibility with existing uses. Based on this, staff recommends approval. The planning board unanimously voted to recommend approval at their June 17 meeting. Let me know if you have any questions about the staff report.
Great. All right, if there's no questions at this time, we can go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at 6:04 PM. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak during the public hearing? All right. I'll close the public hearing at 6:05 PM. Commissioners, are there any questions or motion?
Move that we approve the request?
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Ms. Pinder, County Manager's report.
No report, sir.
Very good. All right, we do not have any items under old business, so we're now to new business. Let's go ahead and address the NCACC District 16 appointment, appointments. So, we had a, we had a brief discussion about this during the briefing. But I think we learned that Commissioner Moore is interested in representing the county at this meeting.
I am.
Great. So, I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Moore and to, as the representative with Commissioner Edwards, as the alternate. All in favor say aye. Aye. All right. Thank you. Okay. The next item is consideration of a budget amendment to accept grant funds from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety to expand medication-assisted treatment program in Buncombe County. I think John Hudson from our Budget Office is here to present this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. This budget amendment is to accept $265,000 from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety to expand the medication-assisted treatment program in the detention center. These funds will be provided to the existing jail health provider to support staffing for this purpose.
Thank you.
I move that we accept the funding.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, John. All right. Next up is a resolution authorizing the execution of opioid settlements and approving the second supplemental agreement for additional funds. And Victoria Reichardt is here to present this item.
Hello, Commissioner. I'm here just to share that we have an additional opioid settlement that has been reached with Kroger, and North Carolina has a second supplemental agreement for additional funds. These funds would still be managed like the memorandum of agreement that we are currently following. We are expecting a little over $850,000 between fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '34. We ask that you consider approving the resolution to authorize execution of opioid settlements and approving the second supplemental agreement for additional funds.
And when do you expect that funding to come?
Expected to start maybe coming in fiscal year '24, '25. And then it'll be distributed over that next 10 years through fiscal year '34.
Motion to approve the amendment.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? I think we knew where that was going, so no problem. All right. Next up is consideration to authorize execution of two contracts, two construction contracts with Rice Construction at 35 Woodfin Street for one, forward-facing facility renovation, and two, 911 backup center renovation, and three, approved budget amendments to reallocate the associated funds. And Scott Metcalf is here to help us out.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to discuss the 35 Woodfin renovation project. It's a continuation of the comprehensive facilities plan. The project includes two major components. One is relocating forward-facing departments to 35 Woodfin, creating a forward-facing facility, as well as relocating the backup 911 center to 35 Woodfin. We've done RFQs for both projects. Stuart Cooper Knoll was the design architect for the backup 911. Clark Patterson Lee was the design architect for the 35 Woodfin forward-facing. We had both projects put out to bid. Rice Construction was the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for both projects.
You're doing great.
I'm sorry. This action, this board action is to establish a project in the capital fund, capital project funds with a budget of $3,814,670 to relocate the 911 backup center from its current location to 35 Woodfin. The new capital project will be funded by reallocating budget from the existing FY23 solar-owned schools and public buildings project and FY24 35 Woodfin renovation for forward-facing facility project. We request that you approve the budget amendments, recommend executing two construction contracts with Rice Construction, and request approval of the new capital project and close out the FY22 911 backup center project. Building from the comprehensive facilities plan, the 35 Woodfin renovation consists of two main projects, renovating 35 Woodfin to house eight Buncombe County departments and establishing a new backup 911 center. Departments to be relocated at 35 Woodfin will be tax assessment, tax collections, board of elections, permits, planning, environmental health, air quality, and the Family Justice Center. The Family Justice Center will maintain its existing footprint with enhanced security measures and an adjoining secure reception area. Plans are in place so there will be no disruption of services during construction. Some of the benefits of the forward-facing renovation, combining these services in one central location allows ease of access for citizens seeking services. Centralizing these services allows us to most efficiently and effectively utilize our space while vacating multiple county buildings. And in efforts to maintain the safety and security of survivors at the Family Justice Center, the construction will include a remodeled lobby with enhanced security measures. The second part of the 35 Woodfin renovation is the relocation of our backup 911 center. Our current center is located in the City of Asheville Municipal Building. The building is, will be undergoing extensive renovations and repairs, and a new location is needed. Relocating the backup center to 35 Woodfin will create a redundant system to maintain our public safety answering point. Many of the expenditures for the backup 911 center will qualify for reimbursement from the state. Here, in this chart, you'll see that our hard bid number for the 35 Woodfin backup 911 center renovation is $3,814,670. We're looking to reallocate $2,412,150 from the FY23 solar-owned schools and public buildings, also looking to reallocate $1,402,520 from the FY24 35 Woodfin renovation for forward-facing facilities. This will require no new county funding. Additional state funding will be utilized for the backup 911 center and determined on a reimbursable basis. And the 35 Woodfin bid meets our core requirements, including safety. There were no items cut from that. Some of the amenities of the building are dedicated workspace for each department. We'll have touchdown space and flex space for hybrid workers. We'll have multiple conference rooms that can be reserved by all county staff. There'll be communal break rooms and lounge areas to promote collaboration. There'll be new wayfinding signage, both interior and exterior, and we'll have enhanced security features. So, our next steps pending approval tonight would be to award the contract with Rice Construction for both projects, continue our internal communications plan, and work with CAPE to provide communications with the public. Our construction start would be the end of July and go till February 2025, with the move completed in March of 2025. Again, our action is to establish a project in the capital project fund with a budget of $3,814,670 to relocate the backup 911 center from its current location to 35 Woodfin. The new capital project will be funded by reallocating budget from the existing FY23 solar-owned schools and public buildings project and FY24 35 Woodfin renovation for forward-facing facilities project. We request that you approve the budget amendments, recommend executing the two construction contracts with Rice Construction, and request approval of the new capital project and close out the FY22 911 backup center project. And are there other folks here? If you've got budget questions?
I just have kind of a, I guess it's sort of just a process question on the, so, so in terms of the FY23 solar-owned schools and public buildings, so it was $3 million sort of set aside for potential projects, right? Which was not needed because there weren't projects to be implemented in that fiscal year. But since we're in a new fiscal year now, I guess I'm just a little unclear on, since none of those funds were expended that year, how are we funding this with something like a capital project that didn't happen in a prior fiscal year? I mean, I'm supportive of the project, it's just really a process question.
I thought at first you were on a solar, so I thought Jeremiah could answer that question. But since you're asking multi-year funds and capital project ordinances, that's a done question.
So, yes, the Capital Projects Fund is a multi-year fund?
That's my, I do have a follow-up question that Jeremiah could probably help with, but that's, this is my first part, yeah.
The Capital Projects Fund is a multi-year fund. And initially, we had set aside $4 million for a portion of work on solar, solar-owned buildings and schools in '23. And then we also made another $4 million allocation in '24. As of now, there's about $1.3 million that's been allocated of the, of the '23 project funds. And as that's where we've hit the available projects for use at this time. So, this will move the remaining, but almost the remaining budget of the '23 project to this new, to this new project. The capital projects often take, you've heard about capital projects, they often take years. And so, it's a multi-year project. So, as long as the projects are open, and the budget was available, we can use the budget. And we would only move the budget by taking action here at a board meeting.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
That answers that question. I do have one follow-up question. So, understanding that, you know, doing more solar on public buildings is all kind of predicated of what buildings are available to do projects on, right? In terms of like, buildings with older roofs need to be re-roofed before they would be ready to, you know, for it to be the right time to do a project. So, I think just, I'm just thinking back to some of our committee meetings. So, I think one project that was identified as a potential, maybe near-term opportunity is the building at the INCA campus of AB Tech. So, just maybe, I actually didn't see you out there, I'm sorry, didn't, I didn't, I was thinking like, I would just ask this question, get back to me, but so if you're, since you're here, if you might just briefly comment on that project and, without going to, you know, too much detail, are, like, what other, are there other facilities that might be good prospects in the near term? So, as we think about like reallocating funds to this good project from this, like, I want to make sure we're not taking any potentially good near-term projects off the table.
Sure. It's a great question. With the INCA campus, we have looked at the INCA campus. The best part about that building right now is the roof. It is brand-new and it is in great shape. However, the rest of the building has significant other needs, including massive electrical system potential upgrades as well. The building is also only about 30% occupied at this point. So, there were a number of reasons we didn't see that as being an optimal solar project at this time. But it doesn't, again, preclude it from being one in the not-too-distant future. With county schools, we have pretty much run the course of all the buildings that were available to us that did not need significant roof upgrades or something of that nature. And with Asheville City Schools, there are a couple of potential schools, but there's a little uncertainty around other issues with the number of elementary schools and what's going to potentially be available. We don't want to put a significantly costly asset on a school that, you know, may or may not be around in five or six or seven years. We were just a little hesitant to do that, but we did have roof replacements on Claxton Elementary and Hall Fletcher Elementary as well. So, as far as near-term opportunities, those, those are still ones that we would like to potentially look at as soon as there's a little more, a little more certainty around the elementary school situation.
So, so, yeah, I'm sure, I think we're all aware, like, the INCA campus building has lots of issues, right? That, you know, many needs. And it is not fully utilized, partly because that's building, you know, isn't all usable. But it still uses a ton of energy, right? Even though, even though it's not well utilized from a space standpoint, it still consumes a tremendous amount of electricity. So, we don't have to, you know, I guess, like, get into all the weeds at this meeting tonight, but I would, you know, and maybe we could get a further update at the Environmental and Energy Committee meeting about the.
Be happy to.
Since it does finally have a new roof, you know, what, what makes sense there potentially this year, next year, things like that.
Absolutely, be happy to.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, other questions, comments?
Can we need to
Or motion?
Do separate budget amendments, or can we do? I move to approve both budget amendments as presented for the nine-one-one backup center.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay.
Just a question, do we also need to do the construction contracts and close out the other fund, correct? Okay.
Okay, yep.
I'll make a motion to recommend executing the two construction contracts.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
And?
Is that it for this item?
Is it, okay.
Okay. Next up is consideration of an authorization for fiscal year FY twenty-twenty-five FTA Section fifty-three oh seven. Fund rescission to City of Asheville with conditions, and William High will present this item.
Good evening. This is a follow-up on the briefing from a few weeks ago. The Federal Transit Administration has requested that all sub-receipients of urban transit funds expend their existing transit funding within a five-year period. Because of that and existing FTA cares and ARPA funding that the county is, needs to expend first, we will be unable to expend said funds within the preferred window from FTA. As such, staff requests that the fiscal year eighteen and nineteen fifty-three oh seven funds be rescinded to the City of Asheville in a sum total of one point three seven million dollars to support their FY twenty-five transit activities. There are four conditions that are provided to the board that I'm happy to read out or answer questions on.
Okay. I do have, I do have one kind of follow-up question from our conversation at the center last meeting. So, thank you for, appreciate this being brought forward. I think it's a really great use of these resources for this time. So in the, the letter does mention, is one of the areas we're asking the city to look at are the transit routes on Hendersonville, in or near Hendersonville Road, where we've got a lot of concentration of homes and businesses, rapidly growing, but fairly infrequent transit service levels currently, you know, in this, under the City of Asheville's transit system. So there's interest in improving that. Our letter basically asks the city to look at that and basically expresses, here's additional resources that we're making available, we'd hope that you would take a look at it. So I think that's great. But this rescission is really just for this point in time, right, it's for this year. And I understand we can't, we're not prepared to make sort of specific commitments beyond this in any level of, at least not in any level of specificity. So my question is, you know, if I was sitting on the city side of this, I would look at this and say, yeah, we all agree it'd be great to have better service levels in South Asheville, but that's a multi-year idea, right? We wouldn't just do that for one year and then stop doing it. So are we, are we communicating to them that while we're not making any specific commitments, the idea kind of inherent in this is that if they do come forward with some good plans for implementing improved service levels in that area, that the county is at least open to the conversation around, you know, in future years, we would also consider similar investments to support that. Because, you know, it would be a multi-year initiative, right? So that's my question. I don't think our letter spells it out, but do you, do we feel comfortable that the city would understand that we're open to that conversation?
So what we mentioned at the last briefing, and William can have more details on this. I know that the city is also looking to see if they can change a formula, which means that revenue would go to them versus come to us and then we rescind. So that formula conversation is happening, I know it takes more than just us agreeing, it would be an NPO-level service question that they would have to study. So that is ongoing, that conversation about changing the formula so we don't get forty-some percent. It would actually be a lesser percent for us, and it would go for the city that they can then use to maintain this route and other routes within their service district.
Thank you for that reminder. And so, so, and are there any more details you can share on sort of when that process will play out, like, when the NPO will act on that? And, because in a way, I guess I would, you know, and I'm not on the NPO, but as a commissioner, I would, you know, offer encouragement to, like, well, if we knew, if we knew things like these items would be part of that, then, you know, maybe we're more supportive. So I don't know, just how does that process play out, because I think we, you know?
Don't have details at this point.
Or when will decisions be made?
It would be a request made to the NPO. It would probably generate at the, at the committee level, and it would be extended on into the board level. The, to your earlier question, yes, the city is preparing as well to put together an estimate on what future transit expansions would cost. And in order to provide a more accurate framework wherein that conversation could proceed, should we rescind funds in the future. But yes, in addition to the rescissions, the allocation formula has been requested to be re-examined in order so that the city does have a more equitable allocation.
And does the county staff, or I'm also looking at our NPO reps, do, does the county currently have a position on that? I mean, it would be good for them, right, but it would be directly coming out of, you know, our resources, right? So do we have a current position on that? Or, or is it something we're looking at too to see if it's something we can buy into? And if some of the things we're hoping to get out of it would be kind of some commitments would come along to address those?
I think our two positions would be that, first of all, a, a study is merited to reexamine how much, what proportion of the funds go to each government. And then secondly, the city staff have spoken of the need to possibly cut service. And it's certainly staff's position that that would not be favorable for anyone in Buncombe County.
Sure, so, you know, and I guess, I guess I'll just say like, just my, my two cents on this again, right? But, I mean, I'm, I would say, like, I, I think we should be open to it, and I'm glad we're giving it an open mind, but one of the concerns I've heard expressed by some of the folks who are real supporters of improving transit services in the community, I mean, they've definitely lobbied us to be supportive of this, you know, this specific rescission. But they've also said, I hope that, you know, the county will ask questions to make sure if the county supports these additional funds, it won't just be so that the city can reduce its funding commitments to transit services in the community. So I guess I would just ask us to, and look, we, we're all under budget challenges, right? So it's not, I don't mean that in a critical way, but just we don't want to approve these funds just to see it kind of cut a different part of the local revenue, so. Anyway, I'm, I'm certainly supportive of this, I just wanted to share a few thoughts and questions, so thank you for feedback on that. Any other questions, or is there a motion on this item?
I guess my, my question was just, what, I guess what was the kind of definitive answer around doing this, trying to commit to this for multiple cycles? That we just simply can't do that just procedurally?
I, I believe the best course of action is to William's point, to run it through what was that formula look like? And it would have to start at the community level, you guys sit on that as well, but that was, when we talked with city staff, that was the preferred route to go instead of this annual renewal and rescission. We do know that we have needs as well, but we want to be at the table so we can talk to the city. To William's point, what does that study look like, so we can make sure it's more equitable to the city? And we all, our needs are also met, so that is where we are at this point, we don't have a timeline.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
When you, when you say study, there's like you gotta be more specific about transit studies around here.
Not the larger transit study, but as on this, the pot of money from this fifty-three oh seven funds, like, make sure our needs are met, and then we can talk about the, the formula change.
I'll make the motion to approve. Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second to support the proposed rescission of funds to the City of Asheville for transit services. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. William, on this item? All right. Next up is consideration of a resolution to support the approval of the not-for-profit Mountain Housing Organizations, Inc., from seeking property tax exemption for its Lake Shore Villas project consistent with the FY twenty-twenty-five Affordable Housing Services Program. Is there any staff report on this, or do you want us to just sort of speak to it? We'll do that, all right. So the Affordable Housing Subcommittee wanted to bring forward a recommendation that we would not prohibit, so we are, we are supporting this great project in, in South Buncombe County, just outside the city limits on Hendersonville Road, the Lake Shore Villas project, which will bring forward a hundred and twenty permanently affordable apartments in a great location. And we are making a recommendation that the, that mountain housing not be prevented from seeking a property tax exemption for this project, so that we've been sort of in flux on the county's overall policy as it relates to property tax exemption for affordable housing developments that, that, that receive funding from Buncombe County. In the past, our policy has been, if you seek funding from Buncombe County, do not also apply for the property tax exemption. If you want the property tax exemption, that's there for you, as it would be for any nonprofit developer. But if you come ask us to invest in your project, then don't apply for that. Long story short, we've sort of revised our policy, and we think it's in the best interest of our affordable housing goals that, that nonprofit groups can apply for the property tax exemption. In addition to whatever investments the county will make in projects, theoretically, over time, like, we will need to invest a lower amount of funding into these projects because we will be aware that they all are eligible for the, the property tax exemption policy. So we already approved that overall policy. This individual project was kind of an in-between in that it was, it's not under construction yet, but it has, it was sort of in the process. So our recommendation is that it be allowed to qualify for the new policy as well.
And the entire project is affordable, right?
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
One hundred percent. Yes.
I'm, I'm just curious, how many projects, nonprofits actually utilize that exemption?
All of them.
All of them?
All of them.
Okay.
It has to be nonprofit, and it has to be a hundred percent affordable units to income-qualified tenants to meet the criteria. So a development that might be, you know, twenty percent affordable or something like that would not meet the criteria. It's for these, it's really for these, you know, projects that are designed to be long-term permanent affordable. Senior housing and workforce, affordable housing.
And so in the past, we just didn't, if they were coming to us for other funding, we didn't allow that, but that's what we're addressing now.
That's right, in our, in our financing agreements with the developer, they would have to agree to a provision that prevents them from applying to the county tax office for that benefit, because they're getting some other greater benefit.
Okay. Thank you.
So move.
Second.
Right. Motion and second to approve, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay. Last item under new business is consideration of a resolution in support of prioritizing public schools and opposing unaccountable, unaccountable taxpayer-funded private school vouchers. This is an item that commissioners requested to be on the agenda, so I don't think we, we didn't huddle ahead of time to see if he would take the lead on this. Commissioner Wells or Edwards, would, one of you like to start us off?
I'm happy to start us. The, the expansion of this voucher plan is, is very problematic for our schools. It's going to have, it looks as if it will have a double financial impact on our public schools and hence the county. And so if the state legislature proceeds with the voucher expansion, our Buncombe County Schools is likely to have an annual loss of five point five million from the state general fund. And then on top of that, the potential to have additional loss of funds based on approximately seven thousand, five hundred for the student ADM. So that is going to have a very potentially significant impact. Also, those school vouchers redirect state dollars that are allocated for our public education, and that would then be used to subsidize tuition at private schools, no matter how wealthy the family is. And our public schools serve all of our students and do not discriminate based on any characteristics. And that is how we build a stronger community and a stronger future for North Carolina. And strong public schools provide opportunity for all students. And so I am very, very concerned if our state proceeds with this.
I wholeheartedly agree with that. I think one of the challenges for me is the lack of accountability that private schools have, and we're sending public tax money to private schools with no accountability. Teachers do not have to be certified, they do not have to maintain a certification like our public school teachers have to. They don't have to provide transportation, they don't have to provide meals, which essentially separates out kids with means and kids without means, and whose families may be working two or three jobs and don't have the opportunity to drive them to school, and they rely on a school bus to get them to and from home every single day. There's been a lot of studies too that show that kids in private schools, their achievement declines, and it's not the same. And I think we can certainly trace that back to not having the same type of well-trained, highly-qualified teachers in the classrooms. There was a comment made by the students that presented to us today about challenges in terms of student performance in, in schools. And I think this just increases that achievement gap when we have students moving to private schools. And I think as we see that, that achievement gap could certainly continue to grow. And that is worrisome. And that's all in addition to all the, you know, the points that you made, Commissioner Wells, about the finances and where that's heading. But at the end of the day, we have to think about what is best for students across Buncombe County and North Carolina. And we know that we have exceptional public schools doing incredible work, often on pennies, and taking away resources to families that, for families that don't need vouchers to send their children to private schools. And again, no accountability is not where we need to be focusing our, our funding going.
And two, what we need to remember is that our public schools have to admit everybody who shows up. And I can tell you from being on the ARC Board for twenty years before I got off, a lot of these private schools are not accepting kids with disabilities. So that's another big problem I have with that, and they're getting public funds.
I can appreciate this, I, I think for me, what stood out was the call to action at the bottom, just making it clear what our ask is, substantially increasing teacher salaries, allocating significant funds to early childhood education, and placing a moratorium on tax funder, taxpayer-funded private school vouchers until public schools are fully funded. I, I think that was the most impactful part of the resolution for me.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Further discussion?
Thank you both for putting this together.
Yeah.
Agreed, and, you know, this is, this is an issue we've also, you know, spoken to before, but I think, in some ways, kind of like the property tax issue for families and households. I, I think that, so, you know, from what I'm hearing from other elected officials around the state, I think the, the magnitude and the gravity of what's already been done is just, is sinking in. I think the, the magnitude and the gravity of what's already been done is just, is sinking in now. This has been sort of an ideological debate in the past, but now it is getting, you know, it's, it's hitting, it's hitting real communities in terms of the physical impacts of direct loss of funding for schools, which really only, you know, local communities then have to think about cutting services or raising property taxes on their families to send these private, to send these taxpayer funds that are being redirected to, to private schools. So, I appreciate it, this being elevated again tonight, too. And I think that while it has been kind of an ideological debate in the past, I think as the realities of what this means for public schools and taxpayers across the state comes into focus, I think there could be a lot more bipartisan opposition to this and, and hopefully support for refocusing our taxpayer resources where they belong, which is our, our public schools.
I know I've already spoken, but I have to add one last comment after what you said. Public education and educating our children should be a bipartisan issue, and we have to come together to ensure that we're doing that. And lastly, I do want to recognize that Dr. Jackson from Superintendent of Buncombe County Schools and Judy Lewis from the school board are here, and we appreciate the work that you do educating our children every day. We know you have hard decisions to make.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. All right, any further comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Passed unanimously. All right, commissioners, we have a couple of board appointments. The first is the Early Childhood Education Board, and we have four appointments we need to make.
I am happy to nominate, so I will say, just for the folks who applied, we had a tremendous group of applicants, and definitely want to hang on to a few people. There might be another opening, so I don't know if we can legally roll these same folks over, but it'd be great to fill that extra spot that we're going to have open with one of the many qualified people we have here. But we did have recommendations of four people, and I'd like to nominate those, Adrian Sandler, Emily Nicholson, Pat Tuttle, and Sarah Lappi. Three of those being designated spots for specific professions.
Second.
Sorry.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, next is the Land Conservation Advisory Board.
I make a motion to appoint Nancy Egerton and David Tush.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Board of Adjustments.
So, I'm unclear on this. Are we, yeah, can you give us some direction?
Regular member, who is Carla Barnard, is asking to be moved from a regular member to an alternate member. So, with that being, if that's passed, then the alternate member would move up to a regular seat. So, we have three alternate members that could be appointed to that regular seat.
Did the Board of Adjustment provide any recommendation about which of the three members that are currently alternates that would like to be a full member?
I do not think so. Not that I've seen.
Okay. So, I'll do it as two, if that's all right. I guess technically Carla would vacate her current spot, and then we'd move to appoint her to the alternate. Is that the procedural correct mechanism for that? All right, I'll move that we appoint Carla Barnard as alternate.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And do we want to solicit a recommendation from the Board of Adjustments for who to move into the regular position?
I think that'd be helpful. Yeah. We have no context for this decision.
Sure.
We'll request that and follow up at the next meeting.
I think, I think in this particular case, a recommendation from them, since they have served but in this other role, would be, would be valuable. If they have, if they don't have one, that's fine, too, but if we, let's ask. Great. All right. Lastly, the Asheville-Buncombe Technical Community College Board of Trustees, one appointment.
I will make a motion to appoint Judy Lewis to serve in this position.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you to everyone who's serving on the boards and commissions.
Ronnie, can I point out something?
Yes.
And I don't know how we can solve it. We need the staffs, all of us need to work on it. A good example is, when you look, we have 17 people here. Excellent, all of them. But there's no diversity on this list. And I know I've tried talking till I was blue in the face to get some on the Early Childhood Committee that I'm on, but I don't know how we, we've got to, hopefully, you know, improve that.
It's an excellent point. Thank you for raising it. I don't have any immediate answer off the top of my head, but I think if we don't elevate it, you know, we're just going to keep doing the same thing. So, thank you for bringing it up. I think it's on all of us to just encourage friends and colleagues and family members to, to apply for these different community boards. So, let's all, let's all kind of keep it front of mind, and, and maybe also just, maybe we could ask Stacy to kind of share some updates with us, I'm sorry, Sarah, about what boards and commissions we have open or will be coming open soon, so that we can talk about that, and we all, you know, everyone can be aware of it, so that we are encouraging folks to actively apply. Because not everyone goes to the county website to look at this information, so we need to just kind of beat the bushes.
If I may, Ronnie, as well, just one consideration. I know, maybe we can do some kind of informal in-house analysis of what time some of these boards are meeting, because some of them are just going to be prohibitive for any working adult. Like, Board of Adjustment meets 12 to 2, which is smack in the middle of a lot of people's workday. So, if you're looking for teachers or folks to, especially in early childhood, if you want a teacher to participate, you're asking them to leave their job to come do that, so.
And commissioners, I know that Sarah has been working hard, really looking at our boards and commission and seeing what needs to be done, so that's an ongoing project. And once she gets her hands around it, then we can bring that back to you with some further information. Our CAPE team has done several fears, we call them, where boards and commission fears, and people know what's available and see if we can get that message out. But Sarah has really taken the lead in trying to get her arms around what we're doing on boards and commission, and it might be helpful to get that data once she's finished.
It was really helpful to have the racial demographic data here in front of us for the first time because it, it is very stark. So, us being able to see that immediately is incredibly helpful. We appreciate you, Sarah.
Okay. All right, commissioners, we, are there any updates from any commissioners on any boards that they serve in, serve on in their commission role?
Just a quick update from the world of the effort to increase sheltering is that an RFP was released yesterday. Very excitingly, many, many months work in, in progress. Staff worked incredibly hard on it in partnership with the city, the COC. And this is an RFP regarding the, a low-barrier shelter, which is very exciting to have out there. So, we'll keep you posted, but just want to make sure that commissioners are aware, but also that the community is aware of that.
Excellent. Any other updates? All right, fantastic. All right, we have a couple of announcements to make. On August 6th at 3:00 PM, the commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. On August 6th at 5:00 PM, the commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. We do have a need for a closed session. Mr. Free, could you share the purposes of the closed session?
Yes, sir. Staff would like to request the board calls, call a closed session in two matters pursuant to 143, 31811, A3 and A6. Under A6, it's a personnel matter to, to discuss the conditions of initial employment of prospective public officer or employee, and under A3, to discuss with attorney employed by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. And we're just seeking direction from the board, and there should be no need to come back and open session.
Move that we go in the closed session?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, and when we are finished with the meeting, we will not take any further action. We'll just adjourn.